Oh, thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Yes, congratulations.
There were some women who were sick. She didn't show up. Everyone's falling sick right now.
Yeah, I put it down. Everything's online now. To speak is everything is all you.
Hi. Um, give it to Jerry. Give it to Lynette.
No, he was very big.
Oh, oh, oh. Yeah, but that's okay.
Lynette Fury, right?
Yeah, she just ran.
He said, immediately called 911. He thought I had an stroke. And I remember the paramedics coming by and they're saying, they're unable to save this guy. We have to airlift him.
Yes.
How are your preps going?
My what?
Your preparation.
For?
Reaction.
Oh, I just got all the paperwork and that's all I've done so far.
I don't know what's going on.
I don't either. And I don't like. I'm sure I don't.
Oh, really?
Just like how?
Yeah. It's so funny. Things have kind of changed. It used to be just kind of like a sleepy little town.
Well, yeah, there were some really nasty things. But it wasn't.
Nobody was hiring campaigns until it was tough like that.
But you're right. It was a little more.
That's how Dusty and Obie got in because, and then he mentioned Phil because there was these other people were doing all these developments and all that kind of stuff. They wanted to sell out the South Hills and so that. Started this whole other thing and it got really nasty there. But it had been a little nasty before that. And then we've had a period of relative calm, but now it looks like it's starting to pick up again.
I would, I would love.
Testing.
Yeah, I'd be happy if you'd just stay away. We'll see.
Cool. What's that? What is this? No. Oh, oh, oh. Okay. Lynette, are you ready?
Yes, I am.
All right. Okay, everyone, I think we are going to call this meeting to order.
Good evening.
Now, do you have to bring up the screens for us because they're not up yet for us? Mine is.
Um, yes, I think once I call to order, it should show.
Everybody else has them up, but I don't.
You don't? You don't?
Yeah, me either. I'm seat three.
Depends on how worthy your call apparently.
You still don't have the display? I know that, I'm sorry, I know the, uh, the monitors were, must have been rebooted because I had to, enter a code and everything had turned on. No, that one I didn't even assign.
Nope, we can, we can trade spots. I can, I can work off the paper or the, no.
Okay, I'm sorry. Because you don't have it either. I'm sorry.
We'll, we'll get through it.
Okay.
Okay, you want to, uh, call the roll?
Yes. Good evening, everyone. I will take a roll. Councilman Jindal. Councilman Leonard.
Here.
Councilman Rigsby.
Here.
Mayor Protem Daly.
Hey.
Mayor Duper.
Present.
We have a quorum.
Thank you very much. Okay, um, hold on, I'm trying to get back in here. Now, it was not listed who was going to do the invocation and pledge of allegiance. Did you have a list or?
Yeah. I'm sorry. Councilman Rigsby was, um, for last week and he missed that, so we can see if Councilman Rigsby would like to do the invocation.
Dr. Rigsby? Awesome.
Kind of a pastor of the city.
Yes.
Okay, let's bow our heads. Dear Lord, once again, we ask you to spend some time with us, help us to think clearly and with intellectual and emotional rigor to solve the problems of this city, one at a time. We ask that you bless our citizens because they're the people we are here to serve. We ask in your name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. City Manager, are there any items to be added or deleted?
No, sir.
At this point, we're opening up public comment. If you would like to speak on an item that is not on the agenda, please submit a request slip. And we have two speakers so far. Uh, Mr. Dick Wiley is first. And Lynette, the, the little corner screen, the corner screen's up, but not the big screen.
Thank you.
Sorry, Dick, go ahead.
Thank you, sir. I'd like to first thank the council for what was done this last year. I know there was a lot of hard work put in. Is that better?
Perfect.
Maybe it was off. But I'd like to thank the council for what was done this last year. I know a lot of hard work has been put in. And you'd be congratulated for the hard job you've done. Second of all, I'd like to wish you all a very happy holiday season. Hopefully a Merry Christmas, a great New Year, and a prosperous New Year with that.
Now, I think it's, it's turning off. Maybe the battery's not good.
I think our battery budget expired a little early this year. I think we can hear you. The vast thousands of people that are tuned in may not be able to, but we're okay.
And Dick, uh, on behalf of everybody up here, thank you for, for being such a great supporter of the city, for being engaged and involved in all the committees and things that you are and constantly being here and helping us and giving us advice. We appreciate you. Merry Christmas to you too, sir.
And Dick, if, if we could pack another couple hundred pounds on you, you'd make a great Sandy Claus. You'd taken it, you need another 200 pounds before you can get the job. That's your challenge for next year.
You work on that and maybe Dan will actually sing the Christmas carols when the fire truck comes past your house.
All right, uh, Mr. Osa, please.
And my fellow citizens, I was here earlier in the day because I didn't know in December if we were going to have a meeting or not. And, uh, I stopped by and the board there, and I have a picture of it, it said June meetings. I obviously went and spoke to a staff member and by the time in the evening I came, it was changed. And, uh, basically, one of the city officials laughed about it and chuckled that from June till now, the city administrator or any of you noticed that? I'm wondering. When I've left messages, it took me at least four messages before I got calls back from four out of five of you. And eventually I got messages after the city clerk sent out an email. It seems rather disheartening that we cannot even talk to our elected officials or phone calls get returned in a timely manner. Last time when I spoke, uh, one of the council members mentioned that, uh, talk is cheap. And would I, would there be people willing to serve and volunteer? And of course I said, yes, I would. What I got, basically, I was told that we don't really want a committee or an advisory board. We don't want any input. And we're just going to give city more time to come up with whatever activities. Well, do so as you please. I'm not an elected official. I'm merely a citizen. But when I see that there doesn't seem to be much enthusiasm and the senior center seems to be the adopted child that got disabled and is put shoved in a corner or in the basement somewhere is what appears to be. We were told that a lot more activities would occur. We didn't even have what hours we operate till I brought it up and we, eventually we got a sign put that we're open three days a week. So it seems that it's just a neglected child shoved in a corner somewhere. Like I've said before, we were one of the last ones in the neighborhood, uh, in the neighboring cities to open our senior center. Instead of more activities, actually line dancing has been canceled till further notice. The bus passes this month are canceled. So I don't see any more activity and the city doesn't want feedback. There we go. I think it's apathy and I think it's disgusting. I went out in my neighborhood and I wrote up to the elected officials of the city of Loma Linda. We humbly request and urge you to provide more resources, information, activities, and services for seniors, veterans, and disabled individuals in our community. Kindly appoint an advisory committee for the senior center to seek input and suggestions. Additionally, we urge you to promote our city's designation as a blue zone. Although I was hospitalized last week, I managed to get over 60 signatures. And one of the other volunteers has another sheet which I couldn't go and pick it up from her. So there are probably more signatures which I'd like to present to the city council, whatever the way there is an official way of presenting. So there is interest by our citizens, but there doesn't seem to be interest by our elected officials or the city staff to do anything about this. In fact, basically what I was told was that there, uh, we don't, we don't really need any more advisory, uh, committees. We need less. Well, if you don't hear and take our feedback, then nothing is going to change. And instead of more activities, what we were told, we've had at least two less things in the last two months. There it goes. Here is the petition signed by over 60 citizens. Couple of more days had I not been hospitalized for a few days. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Okay, we're going to move on to our scheduled items. We'll deal with conflicts of interest if they arise. The first scheduled item is 2A, a proclamation, uh, for the city of College Dale, Tennessee. And this was my request, um, because I'm going to be visiting there soon. And, uh, I thought because of the similarities between the two cities, I thought it'd be nice to, uh, to do something that we, they can hang in their city and maybe we'll get something that'll come back here. So, we'll read this. Uh, in recognition of the distinctive connection and similarities between the city of College Dale, Tennessee and the city of Loma Linda, California. Whereas the city of College Dale, Tennessee was incorporated in 1968 and is home to Southern Adventist University, established in 1892 and affiliated with the Seventh-day Adventist Church, equipping students to embrace biblical truth, embody academic and professional excellence, and pursue spirit-filled lives of service. And whereas the city of Loma Linda, California was incorporated in 1970 and is home to Loma Linda University founded in 1905 by the Seventh-day Adventist Church does a center for educating health professionals, offering a unique learning environment through the integration of health, science, and faith. And whereas the city of College Dale is home to College Dale Academy, a Seventh-day Adventist school grades K through 12, established to educate, equip, inspire students to be critical thinkers who serve others and reflect Christ's character. And whereas the city of Loma Linda is home to Loma Linda Academy, a Seventh-day Adventist school, grades K through 12, which guides students to grow in God's grace, thrive intellectually, develop true friendships, embrace healthful living. And whereas the city of College Dale is a city nestled between the beautiful mountains of southeast Tennessee with a thriving economy, gracious living, excellent schools, premier shopping, fine dining, parks and recreation, and whose southern charm makes all the difference as they celebrate their success and treasure their past. And whereas the city of Loma Linda, meaning beautiful hill in Spanish, incorporates a third of its city to protected natural open space with several miles of pedestrian trails known as the South Hills, with a growing community, excellent schools, parks and recreation, a city identified as a blue zone. Whereas residents have one of the highest rates of longevity in the United States. And whereas the cities of College Dale and Loma Linda have significant histories and top private universities well-known for their programs in health science, education, medicine, research, and service. And whereas the cities of College Dale and Loma Linda share similarities in faith, cultural matters, arts, sustainable development, humanitarian assistance, and healthy lifestyle living. Now, the year before it resolved that the city council and the citizens of this community proclaim the many similarities between the cities of College Dale and Loma Linda and encourage ongoing communication and collaboration between us in such ways that we can improve our communities and strengthen the bond of mutual history and friendship between us. So I will present this in a few weeks. All right, uh, 2B. This is our presentation about the Mission Elementary School, uh, leadership program.
So. I see anybody from, uh, Chief of Commerce, so maybe you have to move it to next month.
I know Karen told me that we were going to highlight, um, one of our battalion chiefs.
Right.
And that.
And the principal at the Mission Elementary School is supposed to be here, but.
And Dan, I, he, he was off and so was not able to make it. So it sounds like we're going to move this to the next meeting.
Yes.
Okay. All right. All right, how about 2C, water and waste rate study?
Okay, this is something that we do every five years. And, and tonight we have, uh, Mr. Clayton Tuckfield. He has been our consultant for the last 20 years. So every five years, he will come back and, and do our water and wastewater rate study. And he have a little presentation for us tonight.
All right, good evening, uh, Honorable Mayor, uh, City Council, members of the public and staff. Uh, this evening I'm going to present the results of our water and wastewater rate study. These studies are essentially very detailed studies, so what I want to present tonight is kind of like the major important items, I think, that you can probably take away from the study. What we do in these studies is to project forward a financial plan for the water and wastewater systems. Uh, we look at the historical revenues and expense budget. And we'd project that forward for a five-year period is what legislation allows us to adopt rates for, but I always present 10 years so we can look forward to, uh, see what's going beyond the five years. Once we got those plans put together, we identify how much revenue we need to have coming in. So we evaluate the sufficiency of your current rates to produce revenue and then identify whether or not we have to increase that revenue to meet those forward obligations. We then perform what's called a cost of service study where the costs of that financial plan are allocated to your customer groups like single-family, multifamily, commercial, and irrigation. And then lastly, we design new water rates that would generate the revenue that we identified in that financial plan. So this is essentially the results of that. Uh, what we found is that revenue needs to increase by 4.3% per year, um, for the next five years. On the left-hand side, you see the actual plan. The columns represent your expenses. The black line represents revenue coming in currently. And then the red line, if we increase with those percentages at the top, uh, you'll be able to meet your obligations going forward. Another item of interest is on the right-hand side. This is your cash and investments, uh, in the water fund itself. So the columns represent the end of your cash. The line represents your target, how much cash we want to keep on hand. And then as you can see, if we implement those rate increases, we'll be able to keep that cash following that target line. Okay, so I'm showing you this. This is the result, uh, of the rates that would, uh, we developed in the study. So the, uh, I don't want you to look in detail necessarily on the numbers essentially, but just point out a couple of things. That this will be the table that will be included into the, what's called the Proposition 218 Notice that goes out to the public. Uh, it's a legal requirement to do so. Secondly, what I'm showing is there's no change to the structure. Meaning that you're still going to have, uh, fixed charges by meter size. You're still going to have a three-tiered water, uh, rate structure for a single family. And then your multi-unit and commercial irrigation are what's called uniform volume charges. So no changes in the structure, just increasing the pricing as we move along to follow the financial plan. To give you an idea how that impacts a customer's bill, uh, on the left-hand side, you'll see usage. So you can kind of judge for yourself where you might fall between zero and 100. The red headings represent your, uh, existing rates and what the bill would be under those. And then the greens, that represents the proposed bill. So let's just take the average, if you can follow the average from the left-hand side. The average is 3,500 cubic feet by monthly. The current bill for that is $120.11. That increases to $127.47, $7.36 every two months, so $3.68 a month is what the water bill increased for the average guy. Now, that was just for the first increase. This is for all five years to give you an indication where it's going to go. But essentially, uh, these increase following the financial plan 4.3% a year. Uh, at the top of each column, that's what the bill is for the average guy, uh, using 3,500 cubic feet by monthly.
What, what's an average household that uses 3,500?
We get the billing information from the city and we can look at the number of accounts and the total usage, and so the average is that divided by the number of accounts.
We don't know if that's about a family of four.
Uh, let's take a look at your structure. So zero to 18, zero to nine, yeah, that's about four person per household. The State Water Resource Control Board allocates 55 gallons per capita per day. So if you take four times 55 times 365, convert that to 100 cubic feet, it's about, uh, 10. So in your case, I think we rounded it to nine, so two times that is 18. Um, okay, so if you were to compare your average bill with other communities, we developed this chart, uh, presented here. So currently, that red bar, that's the average for the single-family home. You're kind of right in the middle. With this increase, you'll go, uh, jump ahead of one of your other, uh, surrounding communities. Now, the point would be that this was as of November. A lot of utilities increased their rates come January. So you could very well even go down some here. So you could very well even go down some here. So all cities have these rate studies done. All their rates increase varying percentages. So the fact that you're in the middle kind of suggests you're right in the group with nothing that would indicate that your rates aren't competitive. Okay, so that takes care of water. Let's look at wastewater. We essentially go through the same, yes.
I'm wondering, and I know this is just a percentage increase for each one of those rate categories, but I'm wondering how steeply we escalate the cost per unit of water based on higher utilization and its effect on people who just happen to have a large property that's still a single-family residence.
Yeah.
Because we've had some complaints about two thousand dollar water bills for a single-family residence.
This might give you an indication of the, if you go across the right-hand side, those would be the percentage increases. If you have someone using a hundred, hundred cubic feet bi-monthly, I guess that's fifty a month. That's not outrageous, but it is pretty high. So their bill would still increase four percent following the financial plan over here. I know when we first implemented that rate structure, I understand that there were some people that saw the big impacts on their water bill.
Yeah, because there are people that have, they happen to have a large property with an orchard or a garden or something and.
Back two?
Yeah.
The, the property owners. And again, they just put in the new meters and it's.
It looks like it would save them about twenty percent.
Yeah.
Over tier three to put in irrigation. And they'd have to figure out, but it looks like the cost per unit is about almost double in tier three from what it is in tier one, roughly?
Yeah, that would be correct. And that's not unusual, that basically, anybody's using water up in those top tiers like that, they're causing a peak on the system. And so they're essentially paying for that peak. So they're, those who are caused the peak pay for the peak.
True, but what I was wondering is, is there, does anybody in your expertise provide a different threshold for tiers for larger properties?
If you recall, you know, this is, this structure was done at the last rate study. So previous to that, so this represents the current thinking going forward with the industry. If you, part of the State Water Resource Control Board is going to finalize this January, what they call their targets for residential and commercial institutional and so forth categories. And as we talked at last meeting, the city has to provide a report to the State Water Resource showing that they meet those targets. So this structure is set up to follow that essentially format.
Yeah, what I'm, what I'm concerned about myself, not being one of those over-utilizers, is I don't want to encourage large landowners to grow weeds instead of green stuff. So I just, you know, I, I just wonder if there's some kind of way to change the thresholds.
Well, this is kind of a state mandate too. The state wants us to conserve water. That's why they, they recommend the tier structures.
True, but you can, but let's say you have a land, you have one square foot of land and you get the same thresholds as someone who has three square miles of land with their one house. You know, I'm exaggerating, but why would you have the same tiers?
But then you don't, you don't water those remaining two and a half acres.
What if, what if you had a single-family residence with a thousand-acre lettuce garden? You know, I'm.
I don't think, you know, single-family home should be growing crops, is what you're essentially saying, which is not the intent of residential.
But it's pretty.
Pardon me?
It's more functional than grass.
Well, perhaps that's a discussion for the city to have with the staff, I suppose, but.
Okay, I will stand down, thank you.
So that concluded water. And then for wastewater, I think I have good news for you on this. So we looked at the wastewater system and we identified that no rate increases are necessary for the city on wastewater. If you look at the left-hand side, you'll see the black line, which is your current revenue coming in, is somewhat sufficient, at least for the first five years. And then after that, some modest inflation would occur. On the right-hand side, the green columns, that's your cash in the water, wastewater fund. And in all cases, you're above that target line. And so we bring that cash down that last year with those two and a half percent increases that last five. So there's no increases for the city's water rate structure. We have assumed that your treatment expense from the San Bernardino continues to increase at four percent. And that's a pass-through. So your customers will see that increase on your bill. So it appears that the rates are increasing, but your city rates are not. It's the San Bernardino, it's expenses increasing.
So now that I see this number, we still have, still have some debt in, in the sewer fund. So we're gonna pay off some debt, use that reserve to pay off some debt in, in a sewer fund.
So this would be what your current wastewater bill looks like compared to those same cities and district we did for water. And you're right in the middle with those groups. So your rates are certainly competitive. I don't see any big issues for your customers with these rates. Lastly, proposed timeline. So tonight I'm making this presentation to introduce the rates to you, what changes may occur. After this, I'll produce a report that I'll submit to JARB and the city. That will be available to city council. When you come back for the January ninth meeting, you'll have the full information. And at that time, I think the city will request that you move ahead with the Prop 218 notices. And those should be mailed out January fifteenth. By law of that Proposition 218, forty-five days has to elapse by the time you send those out until you have the public hearing, which we project would occur on March twelfth. And assuming the rates pass, then they will be implemented on May first. So if there's any questions, I'll be happy to take those.
I got one question. Can you go to the second slide?
You say second?
Second. Right there. Why do expenses increase more than inflation? So inflation is traditionally thought to be around two, two and a half percent. Our expenses are increasing at around four, four point three. Why are they increasing so much?
One new item that occurred this fiscal year is to have a borrowing to pay for the one point six million gallon reservoir. So that's additional debt service to the fund. They now have to increase rates to pay for that. So that makes it a little bit higher than inflation. Also, the capital spending program, that's the green columns at the top here. As you can see, some years it's more than others. So when that occurs, whenever those columns are larger than the line, you draw down on cash. You can see those first two years we draw down. And then when, when the capital subsides, the increase is going back up.
And what's included in capital spending?
There were several items, I didn't show.
All the water main that we replace, the water meters that we replace are the radio rate. So that, that is our expenditures.
Got it. So they have a, let's say, a ten-year lifespan and we're expecting to replace quite a few in twenty-nine, thirty, thirty-one, thirty-two, thirty-three?
Yes, and we have been, again, we have been doing very good at replacing the, our infrastructures, so.
Okay.
Now we're, like I mentioned at the last city council meeting, our water wells and pump is getting pretty old. Our, it's called SCADA system is that control all the wells and the reservoirs getting old, so.
And then second question. So you had mentioned for the sewage that we can repay some debt. So knock on wood, nothing crazy ever happens. But say there is like a major issue that happens at one of our wells. If I look at the trend line over here, we either don't have enough cash reserves or we have just enough cash reserves. Do we have any buffer to pay for some large item if it breaks?
Yes, for, for example, it's on the, on the, on the agenda tonight. We are putting in the one point six million gallon reservoir, which we don't have enough money for. So we borrow the money from special project, which is the city money, and, and to pay for that. The same thing with sewer, look like a lot of reserve. Well, we borrow the water, the money from the water, water fund to help pay for some of the sewer projects. So we always have reserve in, in both general fund, in special project fund. If something happened, we can pay for those. But at the same time, if you look at the right-hand side, our cash reserve is still pretty good. You know, only the, this fiscal year, it come down below the, the blue line a little bit. Next year, a little bit more, but by twenty-five, twenty-six, we'll be right there. So we have about six million dollar in reserve. So we're doing very good, so.
Thank you.
Okay, this is a, basically a receive and file.
Mm-hmm.
So unless there's any other questions, thank you very much, sir, for your hard work, as always.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to the consent calendar.
Questions on three F and three G.
Okay, any others?
Uh, three F.
Yes. So, can I go ahead and go? And yes, this is to purchase additional NAI flock camera, which is the license plate reader. Currently, we have nineteen. Oh, hold on.
Nineteen LPR cameras?
Yes, yes. So we want to add nine more. At, at, and if you look at the location, it's on this.
Yeah, I saw that.
Yes. So the, after, we have it for about a year. And, and we would like to add a couple more location, which is at the west end of town at the intersection of Oakwood and Barton Road, both eastbound and westbound, to see the traffic that go out.
Is that because Colton didn't come through?
Colton, Colton, they got there, but they're on the west side of Waterman.
Oh.
Because the section at Waterman itself is in the city of San Bernardino. So the traffic turned right, we should go north through San Bernardino, so we missed that. We also would like to increase the camera at intersection of Mountain View and Barton Road. And also at the intersection of Redlands, I mean Barton Road and California Street going northbound. Right now, we already have the camera at east and westbound of Barton Road and New Jersey. So I want to make sure I catch somebody going northbound on California Street. And the new intersection that we just put the traffic signal, which is at California and Citrus. So.
Okay.
Yes.
My, my question, there's two bullet points under three F. And one of them is for the purchase of, let's see. Nine additional cameras from, and the company is from Atlanta, Georgia. The second bullet point from flock group is for twenty-six.
Right.
Cameras.
Right.
For the next five years.
Yes.
And we're talking about a lot of money.
Yes.
And I'm not against it. But I am concerned that, first of all, I don't know what citizens' option for public safety COPs is. That's a grant fund?
Yes, they receive every year.
Applied for?
No, we receive every year.
Ah, okay.
So we have some fight balance.
Receiving.
Pardon me?
That's money we're already receiving.
Yes, sir.
And then we're, we're looking at the flock group, and I read their profile and so forth, for twenty-six additional license plate recognition cameras.
For nine additional, we already have.
Total of twenty-six.
Be total of twenty-six.
All right, total of twenty-six.
And we've signed a contract for five years for all twenty-six.
So my question is, why, why do we have to go to Atlanta, Georgia to get LPR cameras in our city?
They're the best one.
We're in California.
They're the best one that, that have this technology available. And what's so nice about this company is they not just provide the camera for the city of Loma Linda, they also provide the camera for city of Colton, city of Redlands, Moreno Valley, and city of San Bernardino started. And then when we're looking for vehicles, they all link. So even though this happened, incident happened in Loma Linda, but if they track it in Redlands, they will let us know.
Ron, Ron, there's only two companies in the country that are, that do this, that are major companies. And the other one is about five times the cost. And they don't even have as good a technology as this company.
Well, that makes, that helps, that makes sense. And so ultimately, five years from now, we'll have how many cameras? So you'll, you'll be tracking me every time I leave my house and, no, I'm kidding.
It, it's important to mention that they were useful in solving a murder case here in Loma Linda a couple of months ago. Right.
Hello? So yes, we had a vehicular manslaughter November eleventh, and we solved it within an hour. So, and also back in July, the deputies pulled over a car, a stolen car. And one of the occupants was wanted for a nineteen ninety-nine homicide case out of San Bernardino. So it's, it's just a great tool for our investigators. And we have access to all the flock cameras in the entire state. So it's just a great resource and we're very grateful for this resource.
So basically, the bottom line is if, if somebody commits a crime that with this system that we're spending all this money on, we can track them throughout the state is what you're telling me?
Well.
Give or take.
Give or take.
Yeah.
Yeah, it'd be a case-by-case situation, but it's just a great resource and tool and technology, like Mayor Duper said, so.
Okay. I'd just like to use more local companies when we can and support our own local economy. And, but if there's only two, two players in the game, then Phil, maybe you and I need to invest something and get something based in California.
This was not a company that was actually a law, it didn't start as a law enforcement company. They actually started in like HOAs, writing cameras more like private stuff. And it really took off. This, this company has more in terms of technology. They use AI. So it, I hate, I hate that we keep calling them license plate reader cameras because that's not really what these are. And in fact, in that particular vehicular homicide case, the way they solved it was they were looking for like, I don't know what the vehicle was, but they plug in red Toyota pickup truck and this system looks for red Toyota pickup truck. It's not dependent on a license plate. The other company, which like I said, charges.
But in the proposal, it's identified as LPR.
I know, because I think that's what staff called it. But they're, they're cameras that, they look at vehicles. But the point is, is it's not just about license plates. Because criminals are not, they're not dumb. And sometimes they'll take their license plates off or they'll do other things like that. So what the beauty of this system is that it's really, it's really AI-based. The other company, which literally charges four or five times more per cameras, they're not even into this. All they do is just read license plates.
All they do is?
Just read plates. Their version just reads plates. It's not as advanced as this. So I was kind of a skeptic at first, but I gotta say, in the last year, it's been pretty impressive. And this system actually solved, where I work, cartel-related kidnapping we had a couple of months ago, where the cartel kidnapped a child out of my city and took him up north. And we were able to, FBI was able to recover him because of this, this company and these cameras.
And again, I'm not opposed to it. I, I'm acutely aware and supportive of public safety. But we're talking about a few hundred thousand dollars. So I want to be sure I understand it before I vote for it.
Yep.
Can I move on to three G?
Yes, sir.
We have a comment in the public.
Oh.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you, Milford Harrison. I, I've just wanted to say how much I appreciate the fact that we're moving to this for our city. Three weeks ago, a suspect in four murders was caught in Beverly Hills because of this. I don't know whose phone this is, but it's not mine.
You're talking about the guy that was targeting the transients.
Oh, I think you just found the owner.
Thank you. Sorry. Oh. We, we're only, we're here to serve. In addition to that, two years ago. Uh, in addition to that, uh, two years ago, we had a rental car stolen. And, uh, Sheriff's Department, two days later, called me and said, "We just got a call from San Manuel." In there, they have a license, they have a reader in their parking garage. And we've found your car. And we now have it, we have, we have a stakeout around the car. And as soon as the people that stole it come to get the car, we'll call you and you can come and take it back. And they nailed them. And I thought, boy, I love license plate readers. And I'm surprised that Colton has any, because this came up at Colton City Council about, uh, a month ago. And the mayor said, "Why do we need license plate readers?" And there's so many good examples. And I, I really appreciate the fact that our city is going to be one of the leaders in this. And, uh, I think they're gonna, it's gonna benefit all of us. I also just want to thank all of you and the city manager for those beautiful lights that have been installed along Barton Road. I came down there tonight on my way here and, uh, because I was up in Grand Terrace visiting my daughter. And they, they look so classy. I really appreciate it.
We have to have good lights so we can see the artwork.
Yes, exactly. Well, the artwork, it just sets off the artwork, is what it does, exactly. It's wonderful. Thank you.
I appreciate your comments, uh, Milford, and, and I'm fully on board with you. But when we're spending several hundred thousand dollars, I want to be sure we've thought through all the details.
And one, one final thing, not to belabor this any longer, but we were the first, uh, contract city with the Sheriff's Department to get the flock cameras. They're relatively new here to California. And, um, now everybody else is buying them, like, everybody else is buying them, because they see how, how invaluable they are, so.
Who, who's responsible for maintaining this system?
They, they do it. That's, that's part of their contract.
So we purchase it, and then they maintain it infinitum?
Well, we, we pay monthly, monthly fee.
We actually don't buy them, we're leasing them. So the difference between this and the other company, the other company, you have to buy the equipment. And like I said, some of their cameras are sixty, seventy thousand dollars apiece. There are cities like Ranchakookamunga that years ago spent millions of dollars, um, setting this stuff up with that other company. Um, that company, higher expense upfront. And you own it, and then when it goes bad, or, you know, miles out, you have to buy new equipment. This model, you lease the cameras at a lower cost per year, and then they replace them with newer models as they come out. So every, all the maintenance and everything's included in that lease price.
What is, uh, I'm looking at, uh, thirty-three thousand this year and seventy-five, six fifty for the next five years. So five years from now, they replace the cameras, or they still maintain the old ones?
They actually replace them. They replace them as they need to.
No, they, if, if you drive by the intersection of Mountain View and Redlands Boulevard, you will see a little square solar panel with a small camera attached to it. And that's it. But what's so nice about it, they check on it every month. The most important part is, is the staff in the office that keep track of the, the, the image and store the image. And when the incident, all the deputy have to do is, is call them or text them for the information. Is, is the information in the background that, that costs.
Ron, actually.
So that all sounds good. What happens five years from now?
Let me explain.
Responsible for the camera. They, if the camera doesn't work, they come and replace it. What happening this past year is we have people, a smart crook that uses stick to push the camera out of position. And we found out they will come out and fix it.
Which is probably why we shouldn't be talking about it in open session, so. Let's, let's maybe not talk about that anymore. So, uh, what I wanted to tell you is we are leasing these for five years. At the end of that five years, they get the cameras back. We don't buy them. With other cities, with the other products, they buy them. So once you bought it, it's yours. And as it goes, as it ages out, you have to then buy new equipment. So there's value in that. The other, about ninety percent of the cost in this is the retention of the stored images. And so the more images you have and the longer the retention period, that's where the cost goes up. But the price per camera is, was only like fifteen, thirty, thirty thousand dollars a, no, it was less than that. Three thousand dollars a year. For the actual cameras, only three thousand dollars a year. But it's the storage fees of the data that behind it, that's the cost.
So five years from now, I don't know how many of us are still gonna be involved with this, but what, what are we anticipating five years from now?
Uh, that, whatever they're charging there at the time. But just so you know, our data gets deleted after a year. We're, we're keeping our data only for a year and then deleting it.
And that reduces the cost.
Well, I mean, I don't, I don't know what the economy, I mean, I, I can't project what they'll charge in five years, but we locked into a contract for five years, so we have the same price. If we'd gone year to year, potentially, it could have increased over a year. If that makes sense.
Yeah, I appreciate it. It, it's just, uh, when we're spending this kind of money, I like to understand what I'm voting for or against.
No, it, this, believe it or not, this is actually the, the cheaper way to go, and it, it seems to be better technology. And I'll let Casey jump in, because we both have experience with, with both systems and.
Much better technology and also, um, what the mayor was talking about with, we're locking into this contract at this amount. And I know that next year, because, um, city manager already got a email that next year it's going up five hundred per camera. So if you lock in right now, it's at that price. And the, these go up every year. So you're actually like doing a cost savings over five years. That makes sense.
And I think we're all hoping in five years, there'll be nowhere crime in California, so.
Yeah, exactly.
We should be good.
Either that or we'll have moved out by then, I don't know.
Right. No, but we're, we're extremely appreciative.
Okay.
And, and Casey actually gets all the credit for this, because she's the one who came up with this about a year ago and worked really hard to, to present it, pitch it, and bring it through. And so she was actually phenomenal in bringing this forward.
And again, I, I respect the concept. I'm appreciative for our focus on public safety. But we're, when we're spending several hundred thousand dollars over the next five years, I want to be sure we.
Absolutely.
We're comfortable with it. I'm ready to move on if you want.
Okay.
Three G. Basically, the same kind of issue. And, and, you know, I've, I've got my paperwork as well, but, award contract to South Coast Lighting to purchase twelve solar walkway lights. So I got two questions. One is, what walkway? Where are they going?
Yes.
The second question is, why do we have to go to Norman, Oklahoma, or Noman? I think it's Norman, actually. Yeah, Norman, Oklahoma, to contract this out?
Yes, it's, it's, we just purchased the light. The city staff will install the light ourself, just like the light that, that, uh, Milford just mentioned along Barton Road. The city just, just like go to Home Depot.
Right, right.
That the, uh, the light is made in Oklahoma. And then we purchase it, they mail it to our city yard, and then city staff installs it.
So this is the manufacturer?
Correct. Correct. We just order, we just will purchase twelve lights, and then the city staff installed it. And it will be, the, the location, it will be along the trail, the walk, Edison Eastman Trail, uh, between Mission and Val Uven. So, so it's a little walkway. That people say request for a light, because it's kind of pretty dark at night, so we installed, we installed.
Is that along the, the electrical?
Yes, north-south. Yes. Yes. They have a little side, little walkway.
So are we going to expand it?
No, no, so we just put a light. We just put the light, that's it.
Yeah, but, uh, are we gonna expand the, the, uh, distance?
No, sir. No, sir. This is just because right now, at night, people request it, it's way dark. So they want to have the light between Mission Road and Val Uven.
Okay.
Yeah. So twelve of them and put it stacker.
Okay.
And then hopefully. Yeah, and then we, we, we did receive three beds, so.
Oh, okay.
Yes, and they're the, the least expensive one.
Okay.
So Mr. Milford can go walk at night now. And for next year, we're gonna, we plan to do more.
Okay.
I have a follow-up. So this is one complaint in my neighborhood as well, is that we have street lighting, but it's only covering half the street, so the rest of the street is pitch dark. These are about a thousand dollars apiece, fifteen hundred dollars apiece. Is there any, uh, more budget-friendly lighting that might be available to put on city streets?
Yes, as a matter of fact, we did bu, we did budget some money this fiscal year, just like this one. We did purchase some, uh, streetlight, which is on a big pole, and, but it's all solar. Solar use of solar power. And it's pretty bright, and we plan to budget more, so we can just dig the little hole, put the footing, and stand there, the light ourself. The city, city staff been doing it. Whereas the, either Edison or the city standard lighting, you have to dig the trench, lay the conduit, pull the wires. It's a lot more work, and the, and the new solar lighting, street lighting is, is a lot more efficient now, so.
Is that a fair thing to say, that the reason why people see the gaps and the changes is because of the difference between who owns the poles?
Correct. That, that, the, the pole in your neighborhood, those are Edison.
Yeah.
Those are Edison pole, that's why it's further apart and, and.
Right. And, and, and we're, plenty of cities that, I mean, there's, there's, there's cities that have that all over the city, and people, it's frustrating, because you have city lighting and you have Edison lighting, and one can't touch the other. But did I hear you say that we're looking at a way to supplement that or add to it?
Yes.
Okay.
I have been doing in the, um, on, on Star Street, on the, uh, street, New Jersey, which is past north of Barton Road, used to be the county area, now the city. And, uh, I put in the solar light.
Okay.
Solar streetlight. A lot, a lot like, less expensive, and the city staff can install it ourself.
I, I know we've been transitioning from, uh, the traditional streetlights to, right. I've been asked by several people, uh, where are we at in that transition? That's question one. Question two is, I've had a couple of people question the difference in lumens between the pink lights that we have, or orange lights, versus the new ones.
Or LED is a lot brighter if, in your neighborhood, it's all the new LED light. What, what happening is those old, uh, pink lights, you called it? It's getting old, so every time we replace it, we replace it with the, uh, LED.
But, but the, but I've had one person in particular who's claimed that the lumens in the new lights are much lower than the old ones.
It's not that they're lower, but they're focused.
Yes, it's more focused, it doesn't spread out. And, and, and if it's city streetlight, the one that we replace is a city streetlight. But if it Edison, we have to wait for them to replace, so might take a little while.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions on the consent calendar?
You need a motion on it?
I do.
I'll move it then.
Okay, we have a first and a second. Madam Clerk, I believe you're gonna have to call the roll on this one.
Yes. Apologize for the technical difficulties we're experiencing. Um, motion is to approve the consent calendar as submitted. I'll take roll. Councilman Jindal?
Yes.
Councilman Lenart? Councilman Rixby?
Yes.
Mayor Portem Daily?
Hi.
Mayor Duper?
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you.
Thank you very much. There was nothing on, under old business, under new business, we have to discuss the historic commission. Not sure your mic is on, I don't know.
I have it on green.
Get out of there.
Sorry. Oh, I guess she has the master control. No. Nope.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers. So we do have an eight-member historical commission. Three of those seats, three terms have expired. Notice did go out about thirty days ago or so, and, um, through that notice, we received five applications. Out of those five applications, all three incumbents have reapplied for their positions. I can confirm, we were slower than usual this past year, but I am expecting several major projects within the historical district. So I do plan to be busy this year, and I am well aware that the historical commission has asked to be more involved when it comes in terms of interpretive signage, like along the Zhangha Trail, as well as potentially requesting for more designations or historical districts. For example, I know one of the great projects that we did this past year, where the historical Bryn Mawr signs. So the historical commission has requested to do those kind of projects too, along with the review of development projects. So again, I, I expect it to be this busy, um, this coming year. What we got going works great. Um, all five applicants seem to be well, um, experienced. And I'll leave it up to you guys to make that decision.
Do we have the applications?
Yes.
Yes, they're in the package.
What's the length of a term on the historical commission?
Oh, some of these folks go back to ninety-four.
Well, that's what I was, I was gonna hear.
Len, is it four years? It might be two years or four years.
Yes.
But that's what makes them historical.
There you go.
Yes, four-year term. Yes, it's four-year term.
I'll, I'll just tell you, I know all through, all through, seeing all three of the incumbents, I think they've done a phenomenal job. Uh, Mr. Kaufman, Mr. Stewart, obviously, Mr. Frank.
Bill Kaufman? He doesn't, he hasn't lived in Loma Linda. Does he?
And, and I can confirm technically, you don't have to be a resident of Loma Linda to be a historical commissioner.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so my, my follow-up question is, uh, do we track attendance? In other words, how engaged are the?
We do track attendance, and I can confirm at least the three incumbents, since, um, their time on the commission, do participate regularly.
Okay.
So over eighty percent attendance rate?
That sounds pretty accurate, if you're referring to the incumbents.
Okay. Um, one other question I had. We reduced the size of this body a year or two years ago, right?
Several years ago, yes. So it's now, it's an eight-member body.
Is there a written charge to this committee? Because I don't know what to expect from them.
It, it's just like, it's just like the, the park identification committee that you attend. They are advisory committee. So the staff will bring an item, uh, to them for review, and, and with their recommendation, and then the staff will bring it back to the city council for, for the final decision.
That's correct. And so when I come before you, we usually call it a cer, a certificate of appropriateness for development within that historical district. And I'm coming before you with their recommendation.
And my last question is how, uh, is there anything we should know about the people who are applying that want to be part of this process? Do they, do any of them bring unique qualifications or? Because we, as long as I've been on the city council, we want to encourage community support through these various committees that we have. And, you know, we, we can't be increasing membership and decreasing membership every time this comes up. So does the eight, number of eight seem to work? And, and what do we, is there anything we need to know about the new applicants?
Yes. Can I, can I answer where if? Yes, they are. Dick Schaefer used to be on the committee. Jim Chip used to be on the committee. Uh, uh, the one that just passed away.
Georgia Hodgkin.
Georgia Hodgkin. So, so, and, and the same thing with Dr. Kaufman. Michael Stewart, he been, he born here. And, and the same thing with Joe Frank. His, his grandparents have a house here, and, and him growing up in, in Loma Linda, so yes, they are.
It sounds like we have a historical committee.
Yes, 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 they are.
Who are very passionate about the heritage of our community.
Okay. Okay.
The eight people that we have right now, they rule. The eight people that we have right now, they really, really care about the historical of the city, yes.
Dr. Rigsby?
In the interest of breaking a tie, if we could add a ninth member, I would make an argument for applicant James Watson. Jim Watson?
I, I'm leaning towards...
He's the owner of Loma Linda Florist. He's probably provided most of your flowers in the last...
Not anymore, he's out of business now, but, isn't he out of business now? Yeah? Yeah, he just went out of business. Yeah.
He retired. He's actually still doing it.
Out of his basement?
Out of his, out of his florist shop. It hasn't sold, but, uh, speaking of historical, he was historically the biggest, uh, florist in town.
Yep.
And did so for many years, and, uh, I just make a pitch for him. I'm gonna be voting for him to be on the...
And I did want to make one more comment per ordinance. It is for an eight-member commission, so that's why we don't have an odd number.
And we would have to change the ordinance. Um, I'm, I'm comfortable with the original three. I don't know if anybody wants to make a motion to support that.
How many people attend, or when was the last historic commission meeting we had?
Last month.
How many people came out of the eight?
We did have a quorum.
Or out of the seven?
I think six. I know one was out sick.
Okay, so there were seven and six came. We just appointed an eighth person last month.
That is correct.
That seventh person that was out.
And that person that you, we appointed was actually attended that meeting in the audience as well.
The seventh person that was out, they regularly attend the meetings? It was just that one-off?
That's, the person that doesn't regularly attend is out sick a lot. But, she, she tries her best.
So, I would agree with the mayor. If we have, like, I'm okay with reappointing these, these look like great candidates. But, also following what Dr. Rigsby said, if we have an opening, we should, if one person, you know, is not available, then this might not be the right position for them. But, I would move to reappoint the three that are currently on the commission.
I don't know if you want to get a second first?
It's up, it's up to you.
I'm, I'm curious, I know we changed this before. Is there some reason why we couldn't say, because we keep going around this, we, this happens a lot, where we end up, all of a sudden, we end up with more people wanting to be on a commission than they are? Can we change the ordinance to say, the historical mission will commit, will, will consist of a minimum of eight positions, but may be expanded by the city council depending on applicants? Is there something, can we do that, or we cannot do that? Because sometimes, we have a lot of people like this that are interested, and we have to turn them away.
We are all-powerful.
I think, I think the challenge with a historical commission versus like Parks and Rec is Parks and Rec is really more advisory. Historical actually has input and development. And so, we do have to be careful, we have to make sure we're statutorily correct with that. Um, I'm looking at the attorney, just to make sure I'm not speaking out.
Well, I, I think the, the council could amend the ordinance to provide a, a range, maybe, if they wanted. I, I think it would be a good idea to cap it and not just leave it open.
The, the reason, the reason we've had this conversation and, and others that have been referred to, um, in the past about these committees and stuff, is that we've expand, over in the past, we've been like, alright, hey, everybody wants to do it, we've expanded it to like fifteen people, and then three people show up. And then, it gets brought back to us, because it's a pain, because it's, so that's why there's, has been a little appetite here to adjust and keep messing with these, so.
How often are the meetings?
Every other month. So, we start January, and after that, every other month, so that...
So, I know there's a motion on the floor, but can I also put another motion, that if someone's missed three meetings in a row, we do something about it?
I think that would require a change in the ordinance, I think, but...
See? Well, first, I think we should take one motion at a time. Second, I, I don't have the ordinance in front of me. I don't know if there's anything about missing meetings, but, um...
I can definitely confirm and have that information at the next meeting.
Bring it back, help some more. That, that could be added, but a comment in regard to the number. I think, uh, I would just want to put out there, when you have a larger number, you, the quorum...
It takes a larger number for the quorum.
It's a larger...
That's where we're having the problems.
Right, so, okay.
If, if we're having quorum problems, we possibly have the wrong members. That gets back to that question of attendance.
I don't, I don't, to be honest with you, though, I don't remember us ever having issues with this particular committee. Because these are, these are committees that people like, like Jim Ship in Georgia were on for years and years and years. I think our challenges were the other ones, which was like Parks and Rec, the Trails. What's the other one that we just were not traffic, not getting people to? So, that, I don't know that this one's ever been the problem. Um, and this one typically has a lot of those staunch, long-time, you know, volunteers that have been here forever. Historical people, yeah.
My thing is still like, if people aren't working and there's, like, we have a lot of interest. Even looking at these people, so both James Watson and the fifth person, Leland, they've lived here for decades. I, seventy-six years at the address. Like, they would probably be very committed to the commission as well. And if we have one person that's not, you know, doing anything, then we should value input of others.
The only other thing that I would have to add here, and this is not, this is not related to anybody on these lists, but we also have to be mindful of staff and time, and make sure that people we appoint to these committees are not going to drive them in a way that they can't be. Um, I see nods and, and some familiarity from Dick and people like you. We have to have people that are collegial and, right? They can get along, and that, that aren't there for their own agenda. So, I would just be very careful, uh, when we look at, at folks and we, we start talking about that stuff, so.
So, I think the motion on the floor is to reappoint the three people that are currently on the committee that have reapplied. I will second that motion.
Okay, first and a second, Madam Clerk?
Motion is to appoint the three incumbents, who are William Kaufman, Joseph Frank, and Michael Stewart, to the historic commission.
Real quick, none of these five are here, right?
What's that? Dick? You're, aren't, aren't, you're on this commission, right?
I will give you a suggestion.
You got a, you got a microphone next to you.
It doesn't work, remember?
It did. I'll give you a suggestion. If we keep the eight, you make your ninth selection. And if somebody is absent, that ninth person fills in, so long as they attend.
Like an alternate?
Three meetings, yeah, before.
The, the problem with that, though, is that we'd have to redo the, the, the...
Rewrite the...
The code section, the ordinance. So, I think we could talk about that, and maybe bring that back as a second thing, but...
That could be used for the other committees too, that, you know, if somebody doesn't show, and you don't have a vote, you know, then it, it gives you the option to have somebody. But, I know in the past, if they weren't there, sometimes there wasn't a quorum. So, this gives, fills that void to a point.
Yeah, okay. Well, maybe we can bring that back as a secondary look at, again, to look at the ordinance.
Might be you don't find out that somebody's not gonna be there until just before the meeting starts. But, I suppose we could give some...
Whereas, it works a little different typically with us, like, for our alternates, we know who's gonna attend or not attend, so we know the alternates can show up.
Right.
Okay, well, we have, uh, we have a motion as a second.
They get to attend like, like alternate jurors. They get to attend, and then only vote if they're official.
Except if they're on the airport, they can't be in closed session.
There are no closed sessions at the historical.
Uh, all right, Madam Clerk, let's take this vote and see if we can move it. If not, then we'll keep talking.
I'll take the vote. Councilman Jindal? Councilman Lenart?
Yes.
Councilman Rigsby?
Yes.
Mayor Portem Daily?
Aye.
Mayor Duper?
Yes.
Motion carried unanimously.
Thank you very much. I think that was the last thing on that agenda, so, uh, let's open up the housing authority. Any items to be added or deleted?
No, sir.
Sorry, no?
I'm sorry, on the reports of councilmembers or officers?
Oh, I don't see. I got my documents. Any reports of officers? Any reports of councilmembers?
One real quick.
Yes, sir.
Um, so some of you might have seen this on the news. SBCTA's been advertising it quite a bit. Bright Line, uh, just got funding, so three billion dollars, I believe it was. Um, for those of you that don't know, Bright Line is a...
Federal dollars, right?
Federal dollars, yeah. Proposed, uh, high-speed railroad that will go from Rancho Cucamonga to Las Vegas. Originally, this was an idea that was supposed to go from LA to Las Vegas. For many, multiple reasons, that did not work out. I think this is a really good boon for our region. So, I'm hoping that we're able to get on it and have something come out real quick.
Can I ask you a question? The original proposal was gonna then link Rancho to the Ontario Airport. Is that still part of the plan or no?
So, they had an underground tunnel, I think you're referring to that.
Yes.
That has been stalled.
Okay. Okay, yeah.
Yeah, not as viable as it was originally.
Yeah, that was, that was pretty futuristic. That piece, they were, like, I get, you can put a, I'm sure it's, it's hard to do, but I mean, it seems easier to put a train out in the desert, right, going to Vegas? But, they were talking about tunneling all the way from Ontario Airport over to the Rancho Train Depot. Okay, sorry.
Quick question. Um, a couple of residents asked me about the water tower building up here, and we have that ramp that go, you know, the driveway, the big ramp. And they expressed their concern, having lived through the mudslides in the past. Uh, are we setting ourselves up for mudslides coming down that big, huge ramp? And I wonder if you could speak to that?
Yes, sir. We, we decide that, for that, the flood of two thousand and ten December, we, we, we designed it so that the water, majority of water will go toward the south side of, of the, uh, the tank. And we put in storm drain to accept that, intercept that drainage, and then drain toward the back, which is have the detention basin to the back. Yes, yes. And, and, and we, we hide the tank, it's actually below ground, well, below the, the top of the hill. There'll be some small portion that come up above the hill, but you cannot see it from Beaumont, you will see it further back, but it will blend in, yes, yeah. I, I, we put a lot of thought into it.
Oh, it's just the fun we had in two thousand and ten with the thousand-year storm.
I was here.
Yes. And then we got sued over it, but that's another story. Okay, uh, moving on to the housing authority. Any items to be added or deleted?
No, sir.
All right, uh, anyone from the public wishing to speak on a non-agendized housing authority item? Please indicate. Seeing nobody, we'll move on to the scheduled items, which we have the consent calendar.
Move it.
A first and a second. Madam Clerk?
Motion is to approve the consent calendar on the historic, I'm sorry, on the housing authority as submitted. Councilman Jindal? Councilman Lenart? Councilman Rigsby?
Yes.
Count, uh, Mayor Portem Daily? Mayor Duper?
Yes. Thank you very much. Any old business, new business, reports of members, reports of officers? Seeing that, we'll move on to the successor agency. Any items to be added or deleted here?
No, sir.
Anyone from the public wishing to speak on any non-agendized item on the successor agency? Please come forward. Seeing nobody, we're gonna move on to the consent calendar.
Move it.
A first and a second. By Dr. Lenart, Madam Clerk?
Motion is to approve, approve the consent calendar as submitted on the successor agency. Councilman Jindal?
Yes.
Councilman Lenart? Mayor, Councilman Rigsby?
Yes.
Mayor Portem Daily? Mayor Duper?
Yes.
Motion, honestly.
Thank you very much. That concludes all of our agendas for the evening. Thank you, guys. Have a very Merry Christmas, and we'll see you next year.